Hello, this is Mayor D'Gore and this is Wednesday, January 24th, 2024 at 6:32 and I want to call this meeting to order. Deputy Clerk, will you take the roll call?
Carter?
Here.
Ellis?
Yes.
Aiken?
Here.
Hodgkin?
Here.
Lawrence?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Newville?
Here.
Baricini?
Here.
Fredo?
Here.
Theodore?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Orne?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Give me a hand, it's a pleasure to be here. I look at it as
of the United States of America and to the Republic, and to the land, one nation, and one that is all with liberty and justice for all.
Any, so, Council President?
I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
Second. We have a first and
Yes, no, but you still
Yes, a first and a second, is there any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The passes? And now we're going to have public comments and please limit your your comments to three minutes. Oh, and please say your name and word.
I guess I have excellent timing. Hi, my name is Steven Fubold, I live at Two Five Fourth Street in Oakwood. I am the Project Manager for the Pride Grace Harbor Coalition. I wanted to speak on two separate issues that I'm pretty sure are on the agenda here, but they're going to be related regarding the, oh, it is on there. This is, that's the, right, the LTAC, yeah, okay, great. So, so one, I wanted to encourage you all to approve the funding for the LTAC recommendations. Specifically, I'm interested in the $2,000 for the Grace Harbor Pride Festival. Last year at the Seaport, we had over 60 vendors. We brought in Mary Lambert, a two-time Grammy nominee, to perform for us for our 10th anniversary. It's a pretty big deal and we appreciate the support that we've had and the support and definitely the recommendation from the Lodging Tax Committee that really thoughtfully looked at these to make sure they didn't recommend funding everything that was on the list, but very much worth noting, they really thought about these really well to do that and I would highly encourage you to, to vote for that slate of Lodging Tax recommendations. Then the second issue is the separated Lodging Tax Recommendation regarding Harbor Art Guild. I will tell you that not many cities have a festival like Ringlow. It is very unique. It is definitely something that brings people out. I know that there were certainly people from California and further away came. It's, there's, really, I, I'm not aware of anything like it and it's definitely, definitely worth the, the funding that you could be putting there that gets funded from people that come to town and stay in the hotels in Aberdeen. And, and I do know that they do that and they support a lot of things that Harbor Art Guild is doing throughout the year, but Ringlow is, is a big deal and I think that it would be wise for Aberdeen to continue to support that. So, I would, I'm more vested in making sure that Allen Pride gets help with the Pride Harbor Pride, but I definitely think that this council should approve the funding for Harbor Art Guild and Ringlow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Larry Murray. I live in Ward Two and stuff and I, it's up here, it's been a while back, except I complained about the people parking on the dyke and stuff along the waterhouse and stuff. It's getting to be a problem, people both driving up and down that and I was wondering by chance if the city of Aberdeen could block that off and quit all the traffic going up and down then and people living on it. Another thing I said I would like to complain about is this of all the trash that we have there in the park. I've seen our code enforcement officers come down that area and look at it. I'm just been waiting up the last few months for him to either, you know, tell them to clean it up or to find them or have the city clean it up and send them or a bill. I'm getting tired of all this stuff, it's not being done.
Do you have the address of that park too we're talking about?
Two sixteen West and stuff Curtis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I forgot my bench. My name is Nori Di Maria Taylor. I go by the net. I live at two sixteen West Curtis, number ten. I lived there almost 30 years and I've watched that park. We go to the city dump is cleaner than that park at this point. Mr. Murray lives in St. Inverna. I live across from where all those cars and trucks and vans are parked, where all the salon and they run the business. There must be at least 10 vehicles back there living on the road, blocking the whole road. They also are one of the people that have the massive amount of garbage. If you, any of you have any time at all, go and see that park and look at this place. It's disgusting. And I found large rats dead over there, so that bothers me. They also have a dog, which I have complained to animal control. I talked to her, I caught her off guard in the parking lot at Safeway getting coffee and she did finally bring a 10-foot chain to chain the dog to a post in their yard. The dog been there, I don't know the chain, she had it posted, they had it tied up now for at least three days, no food, not really a good shelter. The dogs howled and cried all day, all night. She told me that the dog was healthy and I said, of course, it used to come to my house and eat food. I would feed it because they were starving it. It would come and lay on my porch because it was cold. Now it's chained out there in all that filth and garbage. So, something has to be done. We tried calling and leaving messages to the owner. He doesn't respond. He had a private number that one of the old managers who was sent away because he was so high on drugs gave us and he changed the number. So we have no way to contact him other than maybe send him a registered mail? I don't, I don't know, I mean, he's not doing anything. And the drug and the selling of drugs in that park, there's druggies living in number three and they go in there all day, all night long. And it's just bad there, it's just so bad and I lived there almost 30 years and it's just heartbreaking to see what has happened and no help, no help, nobody can, no one can help it.
Thank you, yeah. Anybody else, any comments? Okay, we'll look into it and if you want, you can leave your, your number afterwards so I can get hold of you.
Me?
Uh huh.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thanks. All right, so now the consent agenda will be with Council President Morrison.
I move to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes some minutes from our January 10th meeting, accounts payable and due results.
Second. Yeah, first, is there a second?
I seconded.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, yeah. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes? There are no presentations today and President's report, I'm going to apologize really quick because I'm just now getting caught up with my email. There's a lot of emails that come in, so I apologize to everybody, I'll get to them all, but I, I got a list of employees from the police department that have five years and 10 years service and I was going to list them all, but I'm going to leave that up for the chief to do with his newsletter and his people, but I did want to mention that the employee of the year is Steve Kim from the police department. So, any of you know him?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. And then I, I did get a chance to go through the Fry Creek Station and, or the pump station. It was fun, it's a huge operation, it's amazing how much water is going to be able to go through that pump and it's just, I mean, if you haven't gone over and looked at it, it's really an amazing project going on, so I'm glad that's in the works and can't wait to see what kind of park or whatever they come out of. With that, and then I, last thing, I want to talk about the proclamation I made last time about the Miller Junior High and I just want to let everybody know that January 28th, that's this Sunday, at 1:30 is when their event starts and those kids have put a ton of effort into creating a really cool timeline for the guests to look at and they have some old artifacts are ringing over and I will just encourage everybody to go and support their 100th anniversary and, and they have some great speakers. I think their keynote speaker is somewhere on here, John Hughes, from the Washington State Historic Society will have, he was also for a while, for quite a while worked at the Daily World here in town. Anyway, they're also going to have their band, I mean, it's a junior high and they have a band, they have orchestra and they have a choir, that's pretty good for the junior high.
I have an alumni at that band.
Oh.
It's a whole program.
Yeah, it's a wonderful school and, what was it, this is the first junior high in the state, Washington State, so that's pretty cool. Their, their foresight was even evidently that, that's it working for that. Now council reports, if any council people have reports. Talk about. So. And just looking to make sure us too, that's all right. Oh wait, okay, any of them, would you, if you'd like to make a report? Maybe on that one?
No, they're good, fine.
I just heard all these crickets out. Okay, then, see you then, we'll move on to staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor said, we were able to tour the Fry Creek Pump Station. That project costs approximately $23 million. There is also kind of like a section for salmon mitigation as well, it is a salmon-bearing creek and so we got to learn a lot. There will be kind of a walkway further up towards, if you're heading towards Les Schwab that area, you can kind of bridge and it'll be like a little walk area that I think is going to look very nice, that's included in that. So, once this, we get a little bit further in the project, we are launching six months early, I believe, so that's, that's great that we're ahead of schedule and on budget with this project. We will definitely, I've, I've asked the engineer to invite all of you to take a tour of it as well, so. We also launched the, we had the first, the kickoff meeting for the North Aberdeen Bridge Project, which was good, it was kind of the, it was the project team meeting, so the next phase will be meeting with stakeholders, so keep your eye out for an email that believes the court committee will be representing residents and the council will be awards, the council members from awards to agree, so. I also met with the county this weekend, or this week, last week, sorry, they're all kind of melting into one another, to look into a grant that we could possibly qualify for that could help out with our low-income housing and so I'm just kind of, I will bring that to the council when we're ready, if we decide to go together on this grant. This grant is specific to the county and the largest city within the county, it's a kind of a, one of those types of grants that pushes these, you know, two separate entities to work together to support their communities, so. And then tomorrow, we will be headed to Olympia to do a little bit of lobbying for the homeless shelters, so we will be meeting with Representative Steve Behringer to talk a little bit about what our community needs and how it can serve not only Aberdeen but Grace Harbor, homeless shelter can serve not only Aberdeen but Grace Harbor as well, so. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, any of the directors? Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance has two reports tonight. The first one is a report from Finance recommending that the city council not award any 2024 lodging tax grant funds to Harbor Art Guild as recommended by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. I move that we accept this report.
I second it.
Do I leave?
Um, when you're, when they're ready to vote.
Okay, is there, there was a person in second, is there any comments?
So, the LTAC Advisory Committee met, reviewed and discussed this recommendation that came back from the city council from our last meeting to not award any lodging tax grant funds. They reviewed in particular RCW 42.23.060, which even though there are particular exceptions for some remote interests, if those apply, that particular provision of state law, unlike a lot of other provisions of our state law, they override and supersede our charter, this state law specifically cites that the state, the city charter will be the controlling, the controlling provision for any potential conflicts of interest and Section 12 of the city charter does specifically state that no officer of the city shall be directly or indirectly interested in any contract with the city or for any institution, board, officer, agent, or employee thereof. And so, the LTAC Committee took this and other factors into consideration and approved the recommendation from the city council last meeting to not award any funds.
Is there any more discussion?
So, then, more to some.
Yeah, I'll recuse, recuse myself by voting, vote, and if Council President Morrison would take over for me?
Okay, this report's been moved in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. Oppose? Motion passes.
Die. Sorry, whatever.
I agree.
I would like noted that I abstain.
What's the reasoning?
I don't, point of order, I'm not sure she needs to provide a reason to abstain.
Mr. Mayor? Even since anyone's
Right, Finance, we have a second report. Report from Finance recommended that the city council award the 2024 lodging tax grants as recommended by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreements. I move that we accept this report.
I second it.
Any discussion?
Just to highlight and point out for council members that the specific grants are detailed in the agenda notes and the provisions for this particular report that was submitted to, sent out to all council members ahead of time, so it details which ones, is there any questions about which ones?
All right, is there any more discussion? Seeing then, all in favor? Aye. Oppose?
No.
Motion passes. All right, Public Safety?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm new at this, give me, give me a chance here. We're going to do the police department report, so Public Safety Committee Agenda Item Activity Report, they had 2,116 calls so far this year, so we're just in January, so a lot of calls from last year, which was 1786 at this point. Calls have gradually increased from last summer's low point to realize an increase of 6.7% in the last three months over the 2022 same period. Also included in that overall count is proactive traffic stops. In the last six months, we have seen traffic stops increase from 1,724 at the end of 2022 to 2,432 as of today. That's an increase in 29.1%. We had several academy graduates, graduates and are encouraging traffic enforcement in their unassigned time. So we had, do I want to share that little DUI that they covered? Okay, I'm going to share it because I was excited about that. So in the early morning hours, that brand-new officer got three people driving intoxicated in the early morning hours when people are actually driving their kids to school. Same officer, new guy, give a pat on the back, I'm not sure what his last name was?
Mullins.
Mullins, so if you see him, you know, shake his hand, he's doing a good job for us. So, yeah, there you go, give him a little round of applause there. And personnel items, so number one. Background is still in progress for one police officer candidate, we have 13 applicants in the HR portal. For the other three, they get police officer positions and we'll be moving them forward in the testing process, so we're getting there. That's the police report. Fire Department. So, there was an EMS cost of service study, all the Aberdeen Fire Department EMS cost of service study is nearly complete, it's almost done. A final review of the results will be done by the fire chief and the city administrator later this week. A final report should be ready to be presented to city council in the next few weeks. Medicare ground ambulance data collection audit. The department has entered the reporting phase of the year-long Medicare audit. Department administration is currently gathering the required data to be submitted as part of this audit process. There's a new hire firefighter training for a paramedic that's been hired out of the shugs. He's going to start firefighting certification training at the Washington State Fire Training Academy in North Bend, Washington, and he will return to the academy in mid-April. So, that we're almost completely full with our fire department, just down one. And then there was a carbon monoxide leak response that was successful. On January 14th, 2024, at 11:57 PM, Fire, Aberdeen Fire Department crews responded to a report of carbon monoxide alarm sounding in an apartment building on East Fourth Street. Upon arrival, firefighters found significant high reading of the highly poisonous gas in the building and the building was evacuated and the source of the leak was identified and mitigated. And just a personal note, that's how my father died, was from a gas leak in a trailer. Gas at that time, this is in the seventies, didn't have any odor to it and, and that's how he passed, so they were able to save all their lives in that building, so a little round of applause for the fire department there, okay. Then last one here, American Red Cross Sound, the alarm event, the city of Aberdeen has once again been chosen as a focus city for the American Red Cross Sound of Alarm Event. Fire Department personnel along with the American Red Cross volunteers will again be canvassing Aberdeen to provide and install smoke alarms to those who need them. Last fall, we were able to install 143 smoke alarms and this is scheduled for April 13th, 2024, so they're going to be doing another sweep, they were chosen again by the Red Cross. I know, I did a little smoke thing, little smoke machine for Halloween and they were at my house before I could get my smoke alarm people on the phone, so they are fast responders, so a little round of applause for the fire department, I guess, there you go.
Okay. Next is Councilperson Lawrence, would it work?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of reports and a couple of resolutions. First report, a report from Public Works recommending that the city council authorize to award the Fry Creek restoration project to Brownville construction and the mayor be authorized to execute the contract. I move that we adopt this report. Thank you.
There's been a first and a second, is there any comment or discussion? No? All in favor? Aye. Passes?
Right, second report, a report from Public Works recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the agreement and all WSDOT documentation accepting the $750,000 in grant funds from the Washington State Department of Transportation, Sandy Williams Connecting Communities Program. I move to adopt this report.
We have a first and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing then, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? Passes.
Now we move on to resolutions. A, a resolution setting the date for a public hearing on February 14th, 2024, for the annual project plan for the transportation benefit district for the year 2024. I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second. Been moved in second, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Passes?
This will be Resolution 2024-03.
And for final resolution, a resolution setting the date for a public hearing on February 28th, 2024, for the annual project plan for the 2024 summer management plan. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Been moved in second, is there any discussion? No? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Passes?
This will be Resolution 2024-04.
That's all from Public Works, Mayor. Thank you. Now we go to the special agenda items with Council President Morrison.
I have a report from the Committee on Committees recommending that the city council approve the recommendations for committee assignments. I move we adopt this report.
Second. Been a motion to approve the report, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion passes.
Mayor, I already have one other thing I would like to add to the agenda as well. Next week is a regularly scheduled council meeting, I would like to move to make that regularly scheduled meeting a special workshop for the purpose of strategic planning, it would be at 6:30, so I move that we change the structure of the meeting from a regular meeting to a special. Second?
We have a first and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Okay, passes.
And that meeting will be held over at the LaFarge Stadium?
Yeah.
Did we get a final based on that?
Yeah. You're right. Yeah.
All right, so now we're back to public comments again, is there anybody else have been comments, if I can.
Hi, I'm Jan Spahn, I live in Ward Three. I was just wondering with the denial again of the grant money for the Harbor Art Guild, did you consult with an attorney or are you playing lawyer as well with council people? Does they, does your city of lawyer approve your decision regarding that?
The attorney provided an opinion and it is to the, it is the council's discussion whether or not to follow the opinion of the attorney, so.
So the attorney determined there was no conflict of interest, but the city council decided that didn't matter.
The council has the right to vote however they want to on those items.
A point, a point of order. First off, this is a recommendation from First off, this is a recommendation from the LTAC committee to the council, which the council acted on. So it was the committee's decision. Second, any opinions from council? My understanding were disseminated to council on a confidential basis and should not have been released to the public.
Was it in the public? Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comment?
I'm back again. I'm back again. Okay. I went over to you after, you didn't tell me how bad the public. Okay. During this last freeze, okay, many of our residents pipes froze. And, and I live on one side, so I call it my side of the park because I take care of those people. One of our residents had a really bad leak, the water some, and her pipe blew up and water was flowing everywhere. And I was at work and I've had people call me and say, we have no water, we have no water, we have no water. So to my knowledge, in order to have the water turned off, okay, in the park, the main water, it has to be a city employee, the water department. That didn't happen. Someone took it upon themselves, we don't know who it was, they were seen, they denied it, turn it off. When another resident who lived there called the water department, the water department said, oh, we don't have any record of somebody turning, coming out to turn it off. But if the water is still off at three thirty, we'll come turn it on. Now they've been off around nine o'clock in the morning during the freeze. And so then the water department said they weren't going to come do it. They were not going to turn the water on because I'm not sure because another resident is a person who talked to the water department because I was at work. Finally, they called somebody higher up and they finally came in and turned the water on. If they had not turned the water on and it froze, the park water, everybody's water would have been frozen. And when it came up, all of us, all twenty trailers, could have all had water leaks. That would have been a horrible thing. So this is what's happening at the park, which is upsetting me, is that people just arbitrarily come over and turn off city water that is provided for the residents to live. And many of these people have children. My husband is disabled. And like I said, it's awful. Something has to be done, something. Whether you go after the owner and his wife, we're adding to Rogers, who totally do not care. But it has to be done. That can't happen again where people have no water for hours and told, well, you're not going to turn it on until you fix it. Well, I'm fixing it. I'm going in, I'm paying for this woman to have her water fixed so that she can have, have some kind of thing. I'm fortunate I have a Home Depot card, so I went and bought everything for her and we're fixing it. But the owner doesn't care and I don't know what to do. So I'm going to the committee today. Help, please.
I have to say that I find it disappointing that we're not funding the Rain Glow or the Art Walk this year. I think taking eight thousand dollars from a small town festival is pretty much going to be the end game. Even if it doesn't destroy them financially, it's still sending a pretty bad message to the people who volunteer and work hard to put it together. And I'm not sure you can recover from a slap in the face like them. It would be and I don't know, I wasn't in the room where this decision was made, but I do know the feeling from the outside. And I think the feeling coming out, right, is this feels almost addictive. And I know that not everybody's happy with the way elections go, but it's lit. And we shouldn't punish our community from events that have been longstanding, we have history with. And I'm sure I've got money before. I'm sure that you have safeguards. I know that we work with the Hope Program and they're lodging fund money with our festival. And we have to send in receipts. We have to prove that we spent it in the proper way. And I would think that you have those same safeguards. And you know if money was used appropriately or you have history with your organization. So you have a standing of trust. And so this just seems like there is a way to figure this out. I've seen so far that people in this community are pretty good about that. Making things go a certain way. And I would think that we work hard enough that we might find a way to still make those, the commitment to those organizations and those festivals a real easy loser.
Go less. Go.
Les Bolton, working for. Yeah. You people were elected to make our community work better, to improve our community. And we should all be working together toward that end. And two meetings ago, you voted to postpone a vote that would have funded the Rain Glow Festival because you wanted to do some more investigation. At that point in time, Doug Orr was not the mayor. If you would have funded right at that time, there was no conflict of interest. You created one. And I've worked with a municipal nonprofit for twenty-four years. And I've worked with the auditor's office, and when you come up against problems and you're trying to figure out, how can we do this and not run afoul? You can, if you're actually looking to find solutions, you can go to the auditor's office and say, here's what we want to do. How can we make this happen? And a lot of times they'll tell you, this is the workaround. This is the way that you can do that and not run into a conflict. And I don't see this group doing that. You, you took away funding from an event that a friend of mine in Seattle, who happens to think that Aberdeen sucks and would never live here. And when I said him a thing about Rain Glow, he went, holy smoke, man, that is totally cool. That was one of the unique things that we have in this community. And you guys voted that down. You didn't try to find a workaround. I'm disappointed.
Hi, two twelve force, Stephen Provost, two twelve force, Great Hope Liam. As a city council member in another neighboring city, I will tell you, I have some citizens that aren't happy with some of the decisions that I voted on lately, so I'm not going to disparage you for that. I do want to talk about, kind of specifically. So lodging tax is like regulated by state law regarding like how it can be done. One, it's a reimbursement, right? You cannot do a lodging tax grant without it being a reimbursement. The festival has to spend the money. They get reimbursed by contract. Another thing that I want to point out is that, you know, much as the mayor recused himself from the vote, when, when the mayor accuses themselves from the vote, then it becomes the person presenting with me signs the contract. So it wouldn't have been the mayor signing the contract. It would have been your council president at that point, and that's fine. I'm not disparaging. I just wanted to be really clear that if there was a conflict of interest in there. I feel that it was a decision that they, that this council does not want to fund those festivals. And I don't, and, and that is your right. It's absolutely your right to not fund those festivals. But that, I, I, you know, to kind of put it in any other light, I feel is disingenuous, but, but there's good news. This isn't the end. You can make a decision and try to find another way or not, right? So that's going to be this council's decision to decide whether or not you want to pursue another way to do that in the coming weeks and months or not. That is your right. I, if there was a, if there was a council DOU N S E L opinion disseminated, I didn't hear it. Just that attorneys were consulted. I didn't hear what the result was in this meeting at least. So, but, you know, it's your right and do that. And if you want to have those festivals happen, you'll make it happen. So, and thank you.
Thank you. Can I say something?
In the good of the order?
This is pretty good of the order. Yeah, so one of the reasons I ran for, for mayor was because I saw a city and the city council, city government that was too eager to say no. And as a volunteer trying to make good things happen for our community, I had to come before the city many times, not just for that, but for my house and for other things. And it's really easy to say no. And, and I think I asked my directors as part of, as part of our learning process of working together that we serve our community and we need to figure out workarounds, just like Les was saying. We can't always say no because like this event, even though, I shouldn't be talking about a globe, but any event that anybody does for our downtown, for our community, it's worth making an effort to keep because our poor community suffers because we don't have events. We don't have things for our children to do to make them want to stay here when they grow up. And it's decisions that this council made that chase our young people away. Just keep that in your minds. So at this time, does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, the other, very good viewer.
So I know the council has heard before from residents of manufactured housing in Aberdeen where fees were being raised. And I wanted to highlight that this afternoon, the, the House Appropriations Committee, state level, had held a hearing on House Bill two one one four, which is to propose options for stabilizing rent and fees associated with manufactured housing. I listened to about an hour and a half of the testimony. There were some really good comments, both pro and con, but I couldn't stay to hear if a vote was taken to get this, to send this out of committee. So people might want to look that up and just see what the upshot was for that. Again, that was House Bill two one one four. And then it was last week, I spoke as part of a public hearing in Hope Liam on, on, to, to take testimony on considering an air quality permit proposed by a wood pellet manufacturing plant. And this plant would be operating twenty-four seven. It would be located next to the Bird Sanctuary. The emissions that the proposal stated were much lower than actually operating plants. And that's what caught my attention, that I wanted to make sure that this project was being evaluated with some real numbers because we're downwind. There's a high school next door to this project. And one way or another, it will have an impact on our quality of life. As I said in my comments, that getting new jobs into our area is really important. I just want to make sure that projects bringing those jobs are, are well thought out and really represent a benefit to the entire community. So ORCA will be providing comment on the comments that they heard probably sometime in February. And that's yet something else on the radar to keep an eye on for. Thank you.
Thank you, please. Have a question, Les. Your first question, and that'd be by the airport?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah.
Any other comments that, that you ordered?
I make a comment from the good of the order. So, so Doug was concerned about, you know, money going to things that the community can really enjoy, like, you know, the art, art things. I was a little dismayed at one of the festivals that we had recently in the fall. Someone who works for me went to that, and there was just a lot of things that he came across downtown that were disturbing. You know, someone kind of being attacked under a blanket by the bank by someone who was kind of, you know, hanging out, living there in front of the bank under blankets and, and he was choking someone, you know, and just kind of felt unsafe. And, you know, got him and his little girl and his wife out of there. So I, as, as much as I would love to see art things go on in town, I would love to see the town be, you know, just a little bit healthier and a little bit safer where people can walk around and feel good about it. I mean, he came across feces and other things, you know, that they're just kind of struggling with here in Aberdeen. And one of the reasons I ran for city council is I was dismayed, is I would come to city council meetings and a lot of money going out, I mean, hundreds, thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars to studies of things that never came to anything, you know. Now it's just being to me, you know, I would like to see our money used wisely and to things that we really need where we're really going to follow through because I've seen a waste and it's disheartening. And so that's why I'm here. It's one of the big reasons I'm here.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing I would like to thank.
Oh, yeah.
I want to say that I appreciate all the comments, that everyone got up and spoke tonight and the passion behind them. And I want you to understand, at least from my perspective, that the decision that was made tonight was not done lightly by council, and it certainly was not done lightly by the LTAC committee. A lot of research was done into the RCW, and if the RCW is very clear and our city charter even more so, you can make the argument that our city charter is antiquated, to be sure. But as it stands, that is the law that we have to abide by. And that, and that's what it is. So, thank you.
That was my interpretation of the orders that we were doing to protect you from any. Life or.
I don't need to. I mean.
We get, I mean.
I don't do things. I try not to do things.
I must have misunderstood the reasoning behind why we were, why we were doing it. In my, my impression was that with your involvement in it, that if we didn't.
Not. It could be held liable.
That it could be held liable. And if we didn't hesitate on it and find a way around it, maybe you stepping away from it during your mayorship and having someone else sign the contract, then we'd probably more likely to go through this. My impression was that we were doing it to protect you from any liability or conflict. So we're going to deal with it personally, that's for sure.
I second that, Senator.
No, thanks.
I would like to speak as well. I have no animosity towards Doug. I love him. I think he's going to be a wonderful mayor. I have nothing against you, Doug. I think what you've done for the city, your, the Rain Glow, the Art Walk, the decorations downtown that. Um, the decorations downtown that came out of your pocket and your labor. I see that and I'm in awe every time I drive, especially like tonight when I drive home, I'm gonna see that and I'm gonna smile because it's beautiful. And I think that there are ways to work around things and. We're actually looking into things that we can't really speak. There's a lot of things we can't even say. But it's not that we're not looking and we're not trying to find a way around. Because I want the Rain Glow, that's. I, I was devastated because of the R C W and the. The city charter. But I do believe there are ways around things and, and I will back you a hundred percent.
I was also throwing my two cents. So um, I also would like to see these events. I think they're good for the community. Um, they've got a history, they've proven themselves. So let's move forward and find a way around to get them there. And I think there is a workaround and I think that can be achieved. Um, it just takes a little more work. And we wanted to make sure, um, if we had punted on this again, it would have delayed approvals for all of the other L TAC fund grantee. Uh, donors or beneficiaries. So we wanted to get this passed through so that they would get their funding. But I think there is a workaround. And this, I think, can be brought up again. There's, there's nothing that says we can't bring it up again and, and find a workaround. So, thank you. Anything else for the good of the order?
I'm going to adjourn the meeting.